Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those men and women who have been deployed from the United States to support the actions in the Middle East. Let's pray for their safety. Ladies and gentlemen, we open with public comment. Is there anybody for public comment?
Evening. Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road. This is a good thing. I'm sitting here to say thank you to the Londonderry Police Department. Last week, I was able to do one of their ride-alongs with them, with Officer Wrights, and it was a very interesting evening. I saw many things, and we responded to a situation up on Wiley Hill Road, which was interesting to watch. Everything was done professionally and very, very well done. I thank you, I thank the Police Department for their courtesy to have me drive along and for their professionalism, and I think it was a wonderful experience. And again, Officer Wrights needs to be thanked for the job that she did with me in the car there. So, I want to thank him again, and I appreciate it, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Robert LaBrew, 76 Hall Road. On behalf of my wife and I, would like to thank council, Londonderry Traffic Safety Committee, Public Works and Engineering in getting the lines, the road striped Mammoth Road through the North Village District. Really appreciate it, and she's heard a lot of positive feedback from people around town, including at the senior center. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. Is there anyone else for public comment? Public comment is closed. I'll accept the motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, and we're opening a public hearing for ordinance 2023-04, amending the fee schedule for the issuance of permits by the Londonderry Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined by Division Chief Johnson, who's here as well. He spearheaded this effort, and fire has been talking about this for a while. We have a set of fees that hasn't been updated in quite a while, and they are included in your packet. There was a first reading that was waived on the last, at the last meeting, and essentially they update fees, the fee structure, to come into line with other communities, since we've fallen behind market and fallen behind other communities in terms of covering our costs. In many cases, we're not covering our costs at all, and Division Chief Johnson can speak to that shortly. The other thing that this, that this update does is it anticipates changes that we're going to be proposing to the fire department's regulations, and that, those are in the area of, for example, call box monitoring and making some structural changes to those, to those permits. So, I'm not sure if the chief has anything that he would like to add. It is something that, like I said, we've been looking at for a while, and there, it's based on research that's been done and comparisons with other communities. Turn it over to you for details.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Brian Johnson, Division Chief of Fire Prevention with Londonderry Fire Department, also a resident here in town. Town Charter states that we'll revisit our fees every two years. I've done that every year, handed them in, and unfortunately, it just, not sure what happened in the process. With new administration, new town manager, I've received quite a bit of support on updating these, because they have not been updated since 2008. We get quite the comments when people come in for an oil burner permit, things like that, that Londonderry is a bargain, which it is. The problem is, we're trying to get in line with like the building department, where the fees help cover my cost, my vehicle, things like that, so the taxpayers aren't paying for me to go out and do inspections. One of the big things right now is like fire alarm and sprinkler inspections. We charge $30 for an inspection. There are times I'm out there for two, three days doing an inspection. You know, the $30 doesn't cover it. So, we're just looking at making sure the fees, you know, the subscribers pay for what we're utilizing. Our chief gave me direction of about approximately 10 other communities to look at, and he wanted us in the middle of the road on those fees, so that's the survey that I did, came back, proposed those to the chief, and that's where we came up with these numbers. We don't want to be on the high end or the low end, but we want to be comparable to other communities, but also bring in enough money to pay for the services that people are utilizing.
Right. Any questions?
Yeah. Are you able to provide some examples of a few of the items that did go up from where they were before?
I believe this is also in your packet, but...
We just don't see what it was before compared to now.
Okay. Yeah. The, I mean, some things, like re-inspect fees, went, on residential homes, went from $25 to $30, not a big increase. The commercial property initially was, not sure where they came up with the number, it was $195 for a re-inspect fee.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there are times that the initial permit's only $75. So, some of those are actually going to come down, because I want to be fair to the, you know, residents and the businesses. If you're paying $50 or $75 for an initial permit, and now I only have to go out and look at part of it, I don't think it's fair to charge $195. So, that's coming in line where what other communities do is, if you pay $30, your re-inspection is $30. If it's $75, your re-inspector's $75.
Okay, that's reasonable. So, Exhibit A is the before.
A is the old, B is the new proposed.
Great, thank you.
Oil tanks went up $10. The underground tank removal went up on residential and commercial. One thing with blasting permits, that's a, one of the larger increases. We charge $100 a year for blasting permits. All the area communities around here charge $100 a week. There are times that we go out multiple times a day or multiple times a week to witness blasting. We're doing research with the seismograph, working with the blasting companies, so we're, the $100 a week just is nowhere near covering the time that we're putting into that. Fire alarm and plans review, as I stated earlier, that's probably one of the bigger increases. This will be for the newer, you know, any new installations. We're going from $30 to a dollar per device like we do with plans review. Like I said, I'll take FW Web. FW Web has over 20,000 sprinkler heads, so when they did plans review, it was $20,000. It took me about a week to do their plans, if not more. Then it took me three days to go up and do the fire alarm inspection, and three days to do the sprinkler inspection. The fire alarm was $30, the sprinkler was $30, and it was, I was up there for six days.
Very nice.
So, we're just looking at letting them pay for my time that I'm up there. Fire suppression systems, we don't charge for. Fire suppression plans review, we don't charge for. Radio box monitoring, we don't charge for. BDA installation, we don't charge for. In the 2021 code, there'll be a required annual BDA permit. Those are bidirectional amplifiers. Those are repeaters inside the buildings that make our radios work for us and the PD. These are all things required by NFPA that we don't charge for at all right now, so we're just trying to have the subscriber pay for those.
What would they charge on that?
The fire suppression system is $50, the plans review's $50. The radio box monitoring is $400 annually. We looked at other private alarm companies, and there aren't any, anywhere near that. Dairy charges $500 and something, Manchester charges $500 and something, so we wanted to be comparable to the other municipalities, not the private alarm companies. I just actually spoke with a business on Hillside Ave. They pay about $1,000 a year for monitoring and $300 a month for phone lines. So, I don't think our $400 is out of line. What we're looking for is trying to bring in money, because when we upgraded our radio box monitoring equipment, the town had to shell out $60,000, and that came out of our general budget, because there was no money coming in to pay for that. So, this would help take care of when we need new equipment and service. Standpipe systems are $50, fire pumps are $250. These are things that currently we do not charge anything for, so we're just trying to get things comparable with other towns and charge for services that we are presently providing. Fire pump plans review goes along with that, that's $50. Cisterns, we don't have many of those, but there's one up on, off of Kayla and Iris. The amount of time I took for plans review and inspections and everything was quite considerable. We don't charge a penny for it. So, we're looking for $250 for a cistern permit. Fireworks, there's Class B display, kind of like what we do at Old Home Day. Obviously, we're not going to charge Londonderry, but if someone wanted to come in and do a professional display, they have to have, we have to have two firefighters there, I'm there doing inspections. There's a lot to it. Before 2008, it actually used to be a $1,000 fee. I look back at our old, there was a typo when they brought the new fees onboard, it became $100, so I just wanted it to go back to where we were prior to 2008. Place of Assembly inspections went up from 25 to 50 for under 100 people, and from 75 to $100 for 100 or more people. We also added healthcare facilities and school inspections. Healthcare facilities, you know, we're seeing more and more facilities popping up in town. The state is still working with municipalities. Right now, they are responsible for inspections, but they're having trouble getting inspectors, so some of that process is being passed along to municipalities. So, I want to make sure we have something there that if we are told we have to now start doing these inspections, we have a fee in place to cover that when that happens. School inspections, we're looking at private schools, the Montessori school, Victory Baptist. Every school has to be inspected by state law annually, so I have to go in and go through every single school every year, report that to the state. Right now, the private schools don't pay anything. So, that's, you know, two, three hours out of my day that I'm down there doing inspection that they aren't paying for. We're just looking for them to pay for my time.
I think that's a bad, I think that's a good enough example.
Okay.
I think we get, I think we get the picture. Anything, any other questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who has any questions about the fire fees? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-04.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you, Brian.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are still in a public hearing. Ordinance 2023-05, an amendment to the Londonderry zoning ordinance, building code amendment, section nine, reflecting the adoption of the 2018 additions of the international codes. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the purpose of this amendment is to update our local regulations to coincide with the adoption of the 2018 additions of the international codes. This is in accordance with the state regulations, the state building code, I should say. So, you'll note in your packets, there's a red line document that shows, essentially, we're just updating the specific sections, which is section 9.1, the building code, section of the zoning ordinance to reflect 2018, and then also updating the specific sections to reflect the correct numbers. So, really no substantive change, there's no language change, we're simply updating sections referenced and the year. The last time this was done was back in 2019, where the town came into compliance with the 2015 codes, and it's fairly common that the state and towns are four or five years behind the current year. So, happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
No questions at this time.
Questions, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Do you have, does anyone have any questions regarding the zoning amendment ordinance? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-05.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Amendment is approved. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. New business. Elections update from the supervisors of the checklist. Hi, Kristen, you're a current chairperson, right?
I sure am. Kristen Grajes, Chair of the Supervisors of the Checklist, we're a three-person board responsible for voter registration here in town. We are coming upon a four-election year next year, and we wanted to just provide a brief update on the work that we're doing to make sure that the voter checklist is up to date and current. In 2021, we participated in the statewide reconciliation. That's something that happens every 10 years, where anyone who hasn't voted in the last four years is automatically removed from our voter rolls. During that process, we removed more than 4,000 voters from our voter rolls who were no longer eligible. Since that time, maybe 10 or 15 have come back after receiving our notice to say, wait, we were just kidding, we want to still vote. And so, we of course, re-registered them. In addition to that, for the first time this year, we have access to the national change of address information from the Postal Service. This was a new law that provided us with access to permanent change of address information from the Postal Service, allowing us to remove voters who are no longer eligible here in town. This year, we had a very light election year, with having only the town election in March, which has allowed us to focus really diligently on making sure our voter checklist is as accurate as possible and prepare for an anticipated significant rise in voter registration with the really active year coming next year. Additionally, we had a session last week where, which was the last opportunity people had to change their party prior to...
I'd like to hear it.
I'm, me too. Apologies. Our, our session last Friday was the last opportunity that people had to change their party prior to the as-yet unscheduled presidential primary this winter. And so, I just wanted to provide that update and answer any questions that the council may have about voter registration in town, or what the supervisors do, what our role is, all of that good stuff.
I'll let you guys go first.
Ron, you can go first.
I'm good.
Do, did we have, over the course of the year, do you know how many new registered voters?
So, the, the gross number of voters is down this year, because we were able to receive that information about, from the US Postal Service for the first time. And so, the total number is down, but we have seen significant registrations in terms of new registrants coming in, leading up to the deadline for change of party. But we did remove more than 1,000 voters as part of that permanent change of address.
Do you know what our current total registered voters are?
Not off the top of my head, no I don't. If I had to guess, probably around 14, 15,000.
Oh, wow. We've got a good deal.
So, I have to confess, before I joined the council and became an election official, I was really more or less clueless about how the supervisors of the checklist worked. And Jerry Van Gruenhoff, who was the, on the supervisor for...
38 years.
I was going to say 30-plus, but 38 years, kind of taught me what it all sort of meant. And I really had very little understanding of how our system worked. And becoming, now having been an election official for 14 years, I have a much clearer understanding. I still don't know everything, but I have a much clearer understanding. For those who don't know, I'm usually the person on the outside making sure you get in the building. Things I've learned going through this is, is that for a national election, there'll be 10 to 12 to 14 supervisors registering people.
We, at our max...
Not just the three of you who are elected.
Correct. So, at our maximum, at the last presidential election, we had 17 of us total, registering more than 1,100 people to vote same day. In addition to that, we support the poll workers with the poll pads, and we make sure that we're able to answer any questions for anyone who believes they should be registered and aren't on Election Day.
All right. So, so help me understand a couple of things. Things I'm, you know, that I think I know, I'm not 100% sure I do know, is that if a new law is passed, and let's say the next election is in March, so they pass a new law in August, and the next election is in March, prior to that date in March, you have to get the checklist cleaned up. You don't have to do it that day they pass the law.
Goodness, no. So, we have an extraordinary amount of clerical work that we have to do as supervisors. So, we're responsible for maintaining all 14,000 pieces of paper for every single person who registers to vote. We're responsible for inputting every single voter manually into the computer, both when they register, when they change their name, when they change their address, when they change their party. When they are removed from our lists, we have to go find that piece of paper and remove it, store it for seven or eight years, we store it for longer, and so it's a very manual, very clerical process. Our checklists need to be clean for elections, and so we're always working with the focus of, when is our next election? When does the checklist need to be prepared for that election? So, that's how we frame all of the work that we do, especially with years like this. We're not going to hold sessions every two weeks, because that's time and taxpayer money that isn't necessary for us to maintain the checklist when we only had one election in March, and we don't have another election until either January or February. And so, we work to make sure that that checklist is ready for that next election. So, when we receive information, it may be weeks at a time before it's actioned, because we cannot do anything outside of a public session.
So, the next election is the unknown date of the presidential primary?
Correct. We anticipate it'll be late January or early February.
Now, do you do all of this in HAVA?
So, we do have to do all of it in HAVA, as well as physically in all of the files in the town clerk's office.
And what is HAVA?
HAVA is the statewide information system. It's named after the Help, Help America Vote Act, and it is a statewide database where we have to manually search each voter, review their information. If they have moved from another town, we have to pull that data over, update it accordingly, and then, once all of those changes are made, as a collective board, we have to review and approve them all.
And how many of you do this?
There are three of us.
How many hours do you think you spend on it?
It varies wildly. So, there are times after elections where we're working 40, 50, 60 hours a week, in addition to our other jobs, to make sure that we've, we're processing the information in as timely as a manner as we can, and to make sure that we are meeting all deadlines. So, for things like the change of address information that we just received from the US Postal Service, we calculated that it took anywhere from one to three minutes per person to review and update that information, times there were 1,800 people on the list.
And then you put this in HAVA, and let's say they moved to Merrimack, then Merrimack can see that they moved from Londonderry to HAVA, through HAVA, they can see they moved from Londonderry to Merrimack.
Correct. So, if, as a voter, for example, I moved to Manchester after college, my voter registration went from Londonderry, where I registered to vote when I was 18, to Durham, when I registered when I was at UNH, then Manchester pulled it when I bought my apartment with my husband, and then when we moved back to Londonderry, we were, Jerry was able to pull my registration from Manchester.
So, this is the statewide audit trail?
Correct.
Okay. I'm saying, I'm just checking for understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, and it's fantastic for internal, within the state, but we do not have access to anything externally out of the state, from a digital perspective. We receive physical notices from outside of the state to let us know that people have registered, but we don't have any sort of digital access outside of the state.
Okay. What time do you get to the polls?
If I'm behaving myself, 4:45 a.m.
About what time do you leave? The polls close at 8:00. What time do you leave?
Uh, but on a bad night, 1:00 a.m.
Okay.
I get out before Sherri does. Mostly because I'll go to sleep in my car.
And all of us leave with the ballots and go to the, go to the vault sometime after you go to sleep in your car.
Correct.
So, usually, usually when Cindy tells us it's okay. Are there any other questions from the council?
So, I was just tallying up your number of people who have changed locations and all that. You said it was 1,800, and it was taking about three minutes a person, or individual, shall I say. So, it's 5,400 minutes divided by 60 minutes, that's 90 hours.
Correct. Yeah, it is...
Handle that one task.
Correct. And that was outside of all of the other normal work we do. So, we had more than 100 change of party submissions at our last session on Friday, because it was the last day to do it. All of those each take a few minutes to do, and as I mentioned, there is clerical work we can do leading up to our sessions, but all official changes to the checklist must be done during public session.
And I guess correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, none of you are paid for this position?
Oh, no, we are.
Oh, you are?
Uh-huh. About five years ago, we got a really fat raise. We make $15 an hour.
Okay. So, you don't report to the council? If the moderator leaves, you select the new moderator, not the council, is that correct?
That is correct. We had the opportunity to do that with Jonathan.
And who's your reporting authority? The Secretary of State? Who gives you oversight?
So, we work with the Secretary of State to interpret laws, but we don't have a direct report to them.
But they have some oversight?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then the enforcement agency would be the Attorney General's Election Bureau?
Correct. Yep. And we submit information to the Secretary of State and the Attorney General routinely.
Anybody, I mean, you know, I learned a little something tonight, so...
Certainly.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've had the privilege to work with Kristen since, basically, I started as, as the town's inside legal counsel, and I've been impressed from the beginning with her knowledge of the state's election laws and with her professionalism. I have full confidence in the conduct of Londonderry's elections, and it's because of people like her and her colleagues that, that I have that confidence.
So, do you need anything from us, other than keep showing up at the polls?
Please, keep showing up at the polls. No, we, we are very, very grateful for the collaboration from town council, from the school board, from town officials like Mike, you know, my other board members, Bobby McDonald and Brian McCurley, are very, very grateful for the collaboration and support we get from other, the rest of the Board of Elections. We just encourage everyone to participate and to vote. We have, during presidential elections, we're really, really fortunate to have a more than 70% turnout rate, which is really extraordinary to see, and, and it is an engaged populace that makes Londonderry what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job, Kristen.
Next item, application to, excuse me, authorization to submit drinking water, drinking water and groundwater, trust fund application for the water infrastructure improvements. So, this is, so as we all know, we have a water issue in town. We have been working, we, we, the town, has been working for several months, if not, you know, over a year with DES. There have been meetings with the Commissioner's Office. Ron and I have attended meetings with the Commissioner. This is really the beginning of, of the most positive step we can take to bring public water to Londonderry. I'm going to have the town manager go through what it is. I'm going to have the town manager go through what it is we're doing, and how we're going, how we're looking at going about it, and what this all means. So, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's exactly right. We have talked about this for a while. There have been two warrant articles testing support for water infrastructure investments and improvements. We recently applied for state revolving fund grant or loan funding. We were not successful in that effort, but that was not unexpected. And applying for and being denied for SRF funding, you know, sets us up for success when we go to the Drinking and Groundwater Trust Fund. That is the, that's why I'm here tonight. This is, you know, a project that we have been talking about for a while. And the project that we've been talking about historically has been upsizing the water main along High Range Road that St. Gobain needs to install to comply with its obligations under the consent decree. That line only needs to be so big in order for St. Gobain to, to do its work. But in order to set us up for success in the future, you know, that no regrets policy of, we would really hate to have to dig up High Range Road in five years to upsize the main when we're ready to do additional projects, let's get that, that, let's make sure that pipe is sized appropriately now. In fairly fast-moving developments, which as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, have involved informal meetings and involvement with the Town Council, members of the Utility Committee, and key stakeholders, including New Hampshire DES, and also Senator Morris, who chaired the trust fund for a time and remains engaged in this issue at the state level. You know, those stakeholders really have, have of late encouraged us to think big. And so, the project that I bring before you tonight is not only upsizing that pipe along a short, a fairly discreet section of High Range Road, but running a sufficient supply all the way down High Range Road to Route 102, that will support the full build-out of Londonderry's water system in the future. Obviously, that's a much larger project. But all the signals are that there is likely to be significant support for such a larger project at the trust fund. It's important, and we've, I've been saying this from the beginning, that Londonderry is not going to get a water system for free. And particularly, when you go asking for grant money, it's important to show all the, not only skin in the game from Londonderry's standpoint, but also all the participants in the project. And so, the, the project that we seek the council's authorization to pursue, and that's very important, authorization to pursue, and I'll come back to that in a moment, that project is a $25 million project, which includes the St. Gobain work. About 13, $14 million worth of that $25 million number is what we believe St. Gobain is going to need to pay in order to complete their work under this project. Their work, obviously, is within the consent decree. The work that we're talking about is along High Range Road, and then eventually to the east. But also potentially more water line extensions within the consent decree down the road. You know, St. Gobain is obligated to do what it's obligated to do now. But, you know, despite that, we would like to see more, more water line extensions, and this sets us up for that in, you know, in the future. I talked about Londonderry's skin in the game. This is, well, let me, let me talk about the authorization to pursue aspect of this first. What we have here is, I am not asking for the Town Council's approval of any particular plan. I am not asking that the council obligate itself to spend money. What I'm asking the council to do is to authorize us to proceed with a grant application at the Drinking and Groundwater Trust Fund. I expect that this will change as we have discussions with those stakeholders, particularly on the board of the, with DES, and then at, at the, at the meetings, several of which I think Representative Dunn has, has attended, and is familiar with that process. So, I can't emphasize that enough. This is not set in stone. It very likely will change. But to get our foot in the door, this, this is what, what we're proposing. We have on hand a significant amount of ARPA money, which we've been holding for just this kind of a project. And I think that there is, there is no better use of that ARPA money than taking something like $2 million of it and bringing those dollars as Londonderry dollars to this project. We're asking for a significant award from the trust fund, somewhere in the neighborhood of, of $10 million. That is the project as it stands right now. Again, understanding that this could change, and the only thing that I'm asking for authority for this evening is to proceed with this process. I would emphasize that the, the project scope and the funding picture are based on consultations with key stakeholders, including the Department of Environmental Services, and including, you know, others. So, that's what I'm asking for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so I have a document in front of me to authorize to submit for the funding application. It needs to be witnessed by a member of the governing body. When I sign it, then the witness has to sign it. Since you've been the water guy-
Yeah.
You're going to be, be my witness, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Folks, what you need to understand here is, is this doesn't mean that the $250 million we've been talking about for a water system for the entire town, this is the beginning, not the end. We still have, there'll be, there are further presentations coming that will be done in public, not in a council meeting, but likely in a public forum, in which we will be introducing the additional plans and the additional monies that the federal government has talked about and everything else with us. So, this is, this is day one of something we've been talking about for several years, and I'm trying to figure out where three Gary Drive is. So, you know, because this is what he's been asking for, you know, for, for the last, you know, three years. It takes time. Government moves slowly. But we're here. So, with that. So, we've signed the document. Do you need a vote?
A vote would be great, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I'll accept a motion to approve the, the funding application for New Hampshire Drinking and Water and Groundwater Advisory Commission.
I'll make the motion to accept that grant.
Second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll leave this here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council.
It's a step in the right direction.
Alright, well, step one.
Yeah.
Okay, Order 2023-14, the expenditure of maintenance trust funds for the Leach Library roof repair, which we've only done 100 times. I know, they didn't put the roof on right the first time. The wind blows this way, the flashing's that way, and we're repairing it for like, the, like the 100th time. I mean, literally.
Well, thank you for stealing my thunder there in my intro.
I, you know, I mean, I, I can't believe we actually have a conversation about this every winter.
I'll, I'll say, I'll start first with, good evening, my name is Dave Wally. I am the Director of Public Works and Municipal Facilities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your comments, members of the board. So, I'll just put away the leaky roof list that Aaron Matlin was so kind to provide to me as well, that dates back some time. And yes, what, what I am here tonight to discuss is a, on at least this portion of the building, a permanent solution to the issues we've had predominantly with the flat rubber membrane roof, which is original to the expansion of this library that stemmed sometime starting back in 1995. We put out a extensive bid process and qualifications, RFP if you will, and we had five bids that were turned in. We have selected the appropriate vendor as Roofmasters, and we are seeking this evening for $145,000. The, the bid was for $126,750 for the repairs. At the advice of the Finance Department, we solicited a bond as well for a cost of $4,183. And then, we built in some contingency money, it was about 11% or so, just to round off the even dollars. That $14,067 would be used in the event that when we get into the work, you know, there are some unanticipated issues that we may find along the way. So, that money would not be spent unless if we do find other, other matters to deal with while we're doing the work. We're expected to maybe start at the end of the month, and, and the project would take about two weeks to complete. It is complicated. There's two levels to the, to the rubber membrane roof. There's a lot of HVAC work that we get to work around, different conduits that bring electrical service and whatnot, and venting shafts that come up to the roofs. There's a lot of roof penetrations. All of that will be dealt with. The skylights will be tended to as well. The original glazing compound is probably what is causing a lot of that leaks around those, those, those light structures, so that'll be dealt with. At least one AC unit may have to be removed, but won't have to be lowered to the ground to be able to move it out of the way, work in that area and relocate it. The back dormer shed that leads down onto a larger portion of the roof will be completely redone because of the, they have to go up at a, a good five to eight feet on the rubber membrane for where that whole shed comes down onto the lower roof. And there was some wind damage done to some of those shingles as well, so the decision was made to do that entire dormer on that side of the building anyway. Other than that, that's the project in a nutshell.
I have a question. Would this be a warranty for this time?
Yes.
If something happens, we'll have protection?
Yeah, so, the, the shingles, the products themselves, the shingles come with a 30-year warranty. The rubber membrane roof is a 20-year warranty. And the labor and whatnot, that is all warranted to five years, even though the bid specified to the bond that they work with, that their company is going to provide us the five-year warranty and manufacturer.
So, this shouldn't happen again?
Hopefully. Well, if it does, then, then, then the company, the company, the company will be spending some money, not, not the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. So, how much square footage of area would you say this is? It's a lot of money for...
I can dig into the specs on that. I don't have it right off the top of my head. But the, but the, the backside, the larger membrane roof was 120 feet by 60. The lower portion was, I believe, like 45, but then it narrows in. It's, it's a pretty complicated little area of design.
The roof of the library is much bigger in some areas than what people may see from the road.
Yeah, in fact, that's why we, we had a, it wasn't mandatory, because you can only determine so much from Google Earth when you're looking at square footage. And so, we, and I was, I was pleased to see that all five that did bid did come to the, to the walkthrough, if you will. So, they were responsible for calculating their own square footage and their own specs, not the town. We didn't want to hear, oh, we underestimate, or you told us it was less than that. So, they did their own calculations.
I'm glad to hear that they had to came and then just tried to do separate imagery, because some imagery is very hard to get.
And to the point, the selected vendor has been very impressive. One thing that I think that we've learned along the way is that we've had, the town has utilized contractors that sometimes either have to get called back in on their shoddy workmanship, or we find out when we do go to call them back, they've gone under and they're no longer around. This business has been around and established since 1942. Their references were absolutely impeccable. They do a lot of work, both commercially and residential-wise. And every single one that I spoke to had nothing but highest praise of their company, and even their callbacks, if there happened to be one or so. But I, there wasn't many that I talked to that even ever had to call them back. Some of them extensively have been working with them now for over a decade because of their, the quality of work. So, that was a big deciding factor in making sure that we have a very competent, reliable, long, trustworthy business that is in the area too. They're out of Manchester as well, so.
Wonderful.
So, that was a big part of the selection process.
This is a question potentially for Mike or the Finance Director. This is a large hit to our expenditure of maintenance trust funds. Where do we sit balance-wise in that fund?
I don't have that info offhand, but the Finance Director is here, and I'm sure he can put his fingers on it between now and when he comes up and...
So, I could generally, while you're looking it up if you want, Mike, I can generally speak to it while he gets to the, the exact card number. But knowing, you know, for the two years I've been here now, we've established that this was going to have to be done. So, some things were kind of held back a little bit or dealt with in different ways, knowing that, you know, we can't, we can't, we've got a big problem here we're going to have to deal with. When I first asked that question like you did, we were around, around $400,000. We had the $13,000 expenditure for the heat sensors, the door sensors in the fire department, so we should be somewhere in the ballpark, right? And then also-
I'll look.
No, still, still waiting, okay?
I will come up with a side question while-
And we've got winter coming, and that comes out of that account.
Our Finance Director comes up with his number. While we're speaking of roofs, how is our town hall roof and our police department roof and our other fire department roofs?
Well, Police Department, I, I don't have much knowledge of, of that one, because they oversee their own facility and whatnot.
Okay.
We know the age of our roof. We haven't had many issues here. The only other roof that is of concern right now that I've experienced, we've experienced some leaks, but we've been able to handle them in-house is at Cell Fire, so Station 2. But that was mostly some flange work and some compound stuff that we had to do from some of those penetrations and whatnot over there that caused a little bit of internal leaking. And then, one leak that we thought was being caused by the roof actually turned out to be a leaking pipe in the ceiling, so that was, that was a bonus. But as far as the remaining roofs, we haven't had anything to deal with as of yet. But they are aging. I mean, this building is now, you know, 20 years old and whatnot, so I understand your concern though about roofs. The DPW roof was done a couple of years ago, and as well as the senior center was done when that addition was done 10 years ago, so.
Right, I just, I broached the question, is it's, you know, you've got to be able to plan for when these kind of projects come up-
When they come up in the queue.
And these buildings are not small.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Justin?
So, with this project fully expended, assuming that we go with the full 140, you're looking at about between 250 and 260 pending other projects that are outstanding that have already been authorized.
Okay, okay. In winter?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I guess the other question on that is, what do you foresee the spend-down through winter on that account?
Well, usually when I come before you, it's a good question, because we're looking at all the winter numbers right now. We've been around 37,000 to 38,000, somewhere in there. Last year, we went a little higher, we were around 40-something, because midstream of winter, we started taking on the three firehouses. Well, we do, we do central anyway, but we took on the other two additional firehouses as far as plowing is concerned. We are going to continue with that this winter as well. We don't provide the walkways, the firemen still do that, but with all their calls and whatnot, the, the ability for them to plow the houses as well was, was becoming problematic. So, we work that out with our vendor and the chief, so. So, an uptick probably between 40,000 and 50,000 is what we will be spending on winter. As so long as we stay in these types of winters the last five years that really haven't been pretty traditional winters, they've been 50 to 60 inches, whereas we're usually more of 65 to 75 is a year average winter, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'm all set. I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Order 2023-14, expenditure of maintenance roof.
Second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries. Justin, you can stay where you are. I'm going to, I'll just do you now, since you're up here.
Okay.
And you're here. I'm looking at Town Treasurer, and it's you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, thank you. While he's getting settled, I can take my piece of this, which was, you, you had asked me to obtain a legal opinion whether a background check could be conducted on an appointed treasurer. The answer is very, most likely, almost certainly, yes. There are other communities that do that. There is what appears to be statutory authority for that. And as long as the position involves the handling of money, which I think this pretty clearly does, the legal opinion is that we would be on pretty good ground requiring a background check.
Thank you. So, I think there was a couple of the questions you wanted to cover off from the Town Treasurer's comments last week. I mean, she's been the Town Treasurer for 14 years, we know that. I think there's some things that may have changed over that period of time that you wanted to clarify?
So, yeah, one of the items, when she spoke last week, she spoke what currently is in place. And I'm saying that on purpose, because she has allowed the Finance Department to put specific regulation, not regulations, but deterrents and safe holds in place to prevent bad things from happening to the town's finances. She mentioned that she's not able to go into the bank right now and take out money. That's 100% correct because of what we currently have in place. She mentioned that she's not able to essentially stop the town hall from running. Again, that's true, because of the things that she's allowed us to put in place and allowed us to keep in place. One of the items she's allowed us to put in place is something called positive pay. That essentially means every check that's written, we send it to the bank to let them know that, you know, it's Justin Campo, $10. So, if that check comes back, Justin W. Campo, I get an email notifying me that the check does not match what was sent. I get an email notifying me that the check does not match what was sent, even something that small that changes it minimal. That being said, as I told us last year, my concern is what can happen, what the future can hold. We're talking about background checks, resumes, things of that nature. Right now, the qualification to be Treasurer for the Town of Lundery, which is a forty-plus million dollar budget and oversees over a hundred million dollars coming in, is being eighteen years old, living in town, and getting one more vote than the next person. That's the only qualification.
So are you saying, if I reverse engineer what you're saying is, are you saying if a different Town Treasurer was in place, they could change the rules?
Yes, essentially, what will end up happening is if we have another Town Treasurer come in, we would have to re-sign signature cards and essentially put their name on the town's accounts. That Treasurer can go and say, I don't want the Finance Director as someone that can access the town accounts. With that being said, I now would have no access to the town accounts and would not be able to oversee anything unless they were to provide me with the information. That, as you can imagine, can cause issues. They also can then go and take away the positive pay, because they don't believe that it'll be worth it. At that point, you can kind of piece it together, where if I'm not getting notification that the checks that I believe are being written are being sent to who they are, whoever that Treasurer is has full control over the town's finances with no oversight from anyone else. Again, that can happen with an appointed, it can happen with elected, the difference is, we know that with an appointed, you have the ability to do the background check, you have the ability to see their resume, to see what, you know, qualifies them to be able to do it, rather than the eighteen-year-old who got one more vote. Yeah. So, I mean, that, like I said, that's one of the concerns, is if they are able to come in and prevent all this. And with what's happened recently, I just felt it would be irresponsible to not discuss this again, even though we had discussed it previously.
Any questions for the Finance Director?
Were you able to find out any of the town information?
So the Town of Barrington, Campton, Derry, Greenfield, Greenwind, Hebron, Holderness, Hooksett, Hudson, Witchfield, Madison, Manchester, Merrimack, Merrimack Village District, Nashua, Pelham, Stratum, Swayze, Wolfboro, and I believe Wilmot, however, the information I got kept going back and forth on them. And I'm sure there are more out there, this was what I was able to pull up within the timeframe.
Okay.
But just to clarify, all those towns you just listed have appointed?
Correct.
So it is your professional recommendation that the Town of Lundery move forward with a charter amendment, back to the ballot again with a greater understanding of the fact that we should probably move to an appointed Town Treasurer, since we're moving somewhere around a hundred and twenty million dollars through the town?
I would, I would agree with that, that in my professional opinion, it makes more sense to have somebody that is, you know for a fact is qualified to be able to oversee the finances. It also allows you, and I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but should something awry, you're able to remove that individual or freeze their abilities much quicker than you would with an elected official. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but we can look at that to make sure.
Need a legal clarification on that, because I'm not sure that you can under state law. At least the way I read it, but I'm not a lawyer.
I'll obtain that, Mr. Chairman.
Like I said, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but that would be an added benefit if we are able to.
Okay, so basically where we're at is, is we can entertain going through the process of seeing if we want to take this to the ballot again. We can decide not to take it to the ballot. But we need to start that process if we're gonna contemplate it again.
That's right, and the next step, Mr. Chairman, would be a public hearing. We went through this last year, you know, so the public hearing, you have to give seven days newspaper notice beforehand. The public hearing occurs, that sets in motion a series of reviews and approvals by the Department of Revenue Administration, the Secretary of State and the Attorney General's Office. That takes time, and so you have to march that out and figure out what your drop dead date is to have that public hearing. I think that we could get away with a public hearing as late as late November, but that's starting to cut it very, very close. And so I would encourage the council to, if we're going to go down this road, schedule an earlier public hearing. But as you pointed out, we could have a public hearing, get the AG and other state approvals, and then decide when those come back, we're not gonna move forward with this. So it's really something that just preserves our ability to go forward if we, if that's what the council wants to do.
I think the ask is, is do we want to go through the process to prepare for it? And we're missing two counselors, just be ready if we decide we want to do it.
Is it something that if we put off until November sixth would be an issue?
No.
Okay.
Would it be worthwhile for the Finance Director and the Town Manager to inquire upon how Manchester goes about their appointed Treasurer and what the list of duties are and the parameters that they have to abide by?
Their Finance Director is their Treasurer.
They are, okay. And I guess, you know, you had gone through many other towns where it's appointed, is it also a separate person from the Finance Director?
Depends on the town.
Okay.
Some towns have it as somewhat completely separate outside of Town Hall, some have it as essentially the Finance Director or the number two. But when I say number two, whether it's Deputy Finance Director, Controller, Accountant, whatever that would be. It really varies depending on the town.
And are the responsible, responsibility parameters in place and written out for that appointed Town Treasurer as separate from their duties, or no?
Yes, a lot of times, however, they are intermingled, if that makes sense.
Yes.
If you were to look at our Controller, one of the items that their job is to do is to reconcile bank statements. One of the jobs of the Treasurer would be to reconcile bank statements.
I saw something more detailed from the Town of Hudson, and I think they actually got somebody from outside the town, didn't they?
Correct, a lot of town, not a lot. When you do appointed, you do have the ability to remove the residency requirements.
But you, but you don't have to.
You don't have to.
I just wanted to ask, in your opinion, do you agree with Kathy that it should be somebody outside the town? It should be someone that is appointed, if we go through this route, it should be someone that's appointed, not with the town, it shouldn't be the same person?
As you said, outside this building.
Yeah, outside this building.
In my opinion, I think it should be somebody in the Finance Department. I think you're duplicating efforts there, and I understand that some individuals want to see the oversight. However, my viewpoint on this is the individuals in the Finance Department are hired to do this job, that is their job, that's what, you know, puts gas in their car, food on their table. A Treasurer with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar stipend, if something happens between their job or doing this, twenty-five-hundred isn't covering their expenses. So they're gonna focus on that and this will sit by the wayside. Which, no fault of them, I mean, if you think about it, it's, it makes sense, you gotta do what's best for your family and things of that nature, where twenty-five doesn't cover it. In my opinion, it should be somebody within the Finance Department.
And we can debate that out.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? I mean, I guess what we're looking for is, is should they, we're not setting a date, but should they start going down the path to figure out what the next steps are being, I think that's what we're looking for, right?
Correct.
So we're saying, should they spend their time there figuring that out, so that we can figure out whether or not we want a public hearing?
I would say so, yes. I don't have a problem looking into it.
Very good.
All right, we'll go further.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to new business. Say, Steve, I'm gonna do eighteen, nineteen, and twenty all as one. So you can knock them all out in a row and we'll vote once. If you're okay with that.
Oh, that will be fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. So this is a, pretty much a housekeeping item for the elderly exemption program, the disability exemption program, and for the Veterans Tax Credit for two different reasons. The elderly and disabled exemption program grants a benefit amount, which is effectively reduced by the impact of the revaluation that occurred this year, and so we're recommending that the elderly exemption amounts per category for persons ages sixty-five to seventy-four be increased to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For persons seventy-five years of age to seventy-nine years be increased to two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And for a person who is eighty years or older, be increased to three hundred thousand dollars. By examining the change in value for the properties that are impacted by this, these exemptions by the categories, the increase is overall about twenty-three percent per category. And that's about the increase of value in the town overall as well. And so those seem to be very practical places to adjust this to. The disability exemption has always been set at the amount of the lowest age category for the elderly exemption program. And for to help to understand what would happen if the amount of the highest age category was increased to the total exemption of the value of property, as the council had requested in the spring when I was here before you. That would be an additional one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of exempted taxes based on the twenty-twenty-two tax rate. And so that would be the ultimate cost of increasing that beyond the three hundred thousand dollars that's recommended for the eighty-plus category to a full exemption of the taxes. And finally, for the Veterans Tax Credit. So this is a readoption, which has been recommended by the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration. There was a change to the qualification statute. And the DRA believed that a readoption was necessary in order to maintain the the credit at the level that it had previously been adopted at. And I'm happy to answer any questions I might.
Just have one quick question is, how much, do you have a number of how much each exemption costs the town?
So the exemptions vary by the value of the property.
Yeah, I just like an approximate, like the elderly credit, how much does that impact the town if we were to?
So currently, it would be the current credit, because we're really just increasing the valuations.
Correct, so I, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna see if I can pull out quickly.
Right, so the, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong about this, Steve, but I think the technical legal answer is it costs the town nothing, because an exemption real allocates the tax burden, it does not change the amount of tax that's being collected.
And last year, it reallocated thirty million one hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. Basically, it would stay the same, because it's just the valuations going up.
Ted? I have no real questions on this, we've gone through this many a time.
All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution Two Oh Two Three One Eight, One Nine, and Two Zero.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Next item, ARPA request.
Good evening, everyone, hopefully this will be quick. My name is Kirsten Hildanen, I'm the Administrative Support Coordinator in the Town Manager's Office. Last July, at the Joint Loss Management Committee meeting, which is a committee that's required by our insurance company, for background, if you're not familiar, it discusses safety and security concerns in Town Hall and other municipal buildings. One thing that came up was the idea of building a more enhanced medical supply in Town Hall in case of emergencies. Somebody mentioned the idea of incorporating Stop the Bleed kits into Town Hall. Stop the Bleed kits, it's something created and promoted by the American Society of Surgeons, I don't have the exact one there. But it was created post Sandy Hook as a way to make sure that appropriate trauma supplies are in public buildings. Back in July of this year, the state passed Senate Bill Two Oh Four requiring Stop the Bleed kits in all state buildings. We are not legally required to have one, but we did look into the possibility of acquiring those kits, but we also thought about our particular needs in this building, including the layout of the building, our proximity to first responders. And through my consultations with the Fire Department, we landed on the need for perhaps a more elaborate first aid kit that would include similar supplies as the Stop the Bleed kits, but maybe not the exact Stop the Bleed kits. So I want to thank Battalion Chief Phil LeBlanc, Lieutenant Kevin Barnett, and Deputy Chief Fred Heinrich for their help on this project. We came up with the idea of getting a trauma kit for each floor of Town Hall, one of which would be accessible to this area when, for example, times like this, when the break room is closed down, so we would keep it in proximity to this, the other one would be kept upstairs. And then adding to the trauma kit with just regular first aid supplies. So that is this request here, I have four or five hundred and five dollars and fifty-six cents of ARPA funds.
Any questions?
I guess my only question would be from Mike is, where do we stand on ARPA funds?
We have roughly two-point-four million dollars, two-point-four, five million dollars left.
Wonderful, thank you. Great job.
I'll accept a motion to approve the ARPA request.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative.
Cool, thanks.
All righty, approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the October second Town Council meetings as presented.
So moved, second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the unsealed, non-public Town Council meetings for the same date.
So moved, second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, liaison reports.
I have none at this time, sir.
All right, so I only have one, I attended the Lions Hall conversation or discussion on Saturday. You know, listening to what everyone said, and then I had a call from, today, I got a call from the Public Works Director and the Town Manager, had a discussion with them, and asked if they could come back with some sort of phased understanding of what can and cannot be possible. So I've asked them to come back with that to the council to, you know, kind of, you know, think outside the box and see what we can, see what we can and we can't do, and what is, what is the possible? So that was, that's from that, and Assistant Town Manager, report, we'll do you first.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, the Town Manager and I attended the Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner. And I just wanted to note for the council that a Lundery Business won Business of the Year, which is quite the accomplishment, and that was Minuteman Press, right here in town.
Yeah, nice man, fantastic. And Town Manager, report.
No Town Manager report for me this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is November fourth, it's the Budget Kickoff Workshop, this is not a public meeting with public comments. This is an opportunity for the department heads to come in and present their budgets. And that's at nine AM here in the council chambers, and the next Town Council meeting is November sixth, twenty-twenty-three. With that, is there anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.